Everybody please rise for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
And to the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy.
Mr. Cantalasa.
You would like, please bow your heads for the Lord's prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Our next public workshop will be held Tuesday, October thirty first at ten a.m. Our next regular meeting will be held on Wednesday, November first at ten thirty a.m., both of those in this room. And then we have a public transportation meeting on Wednesday at one o'clock, also in this room. Following today's meeting at one, there is also our first TID meeting, which is also a public meeting.
A public transportation meeting with him?
ODOT, Eastgate, and some of the other, WRTA, some of the other groups. We'll talk about it here later. We talked about in our workshop yesterday. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and accept and approve the video recording of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Commissioner's Regular Meeting is the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because I don't believe that the recording was done properly and our compliance reflected what the revised code says, no.
I'd like to make a point of order regarding that.
That's not a point of order.
I'll make a comment then.
Now, did your comments come, Mr. President, please get back to the meeting correctly.
I want to make a note that YouTube, we're on YouTube, so everybody that watches the meeting can watch this streamed on YouTube.
It's not the point.
And everything is transcribed on YouTube. Every word is written out to the second where you can go back and refer to the second. So there are written minutes for every meeting that goes along with our YouTube video. So we do have a written copy of every meeting with the video with it. Just making a note of that, that
Okay.
we just realized that, that it is being transcribed and has been on YouTube, every word of every, everything we say here.
Except for when people speak without being heard. Okay.
That was never transcribed.
Right. So again.
If they were speaking without being heard.
Run a meeting correctly. Discussion, if you want to discuss, it comes after the second. Please learn how to do it.
You vote and discuss every single thing. When you give your vote, you always give a reason afterward. Why?
A reason.
I'm giving the reason why I voted yes.
Do it at that time. I mean, really.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer appropriations.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission, number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to approve or deny construction of county project number five dash S dash eighteen, the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project located in Yankee Lake Village and Brookfield Township.
Motion to approve construction of county project number five S eighteen at the Yankee Lake Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project located in Yankee Lake Village and Brookfield Township.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Item number seven is to authorize the engineering firm of MS Consultants, Inc. to provide the technical services listed below with regard to the Crane Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project, project number seven dash S dash twenty-two in Weathersfield Township, and to enter into an engineering agreement with MS Consultants, Inc. for said professional services in an amount not to exceed three hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Only because we're voting on a, we're voting on something that could, should have been approved by the prosecutor's office and is supposed to be sent with that, and I've got conflicting information that it was approved, but then they don't have anything in writing. I, I just know because of the process, and we need to make sure things are approved to prevent mistakes that have crossed the county to get sued. No. Just for process.
Item number eight is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Mr. Keith Ames for the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant with the Tremble County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective November sixth, twenty twenty-three, pay range four zero, years fifteen sixty-four per hour.
A motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine is to approve modification number two of the existing professional services agreement with Phillips Secanic Architects, Inc. related to providing technical specifications for voter access and roof improvements for the Tremble County Board of Elections Building at a total cost of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Modification number one was needed for the rebid process and asbestos redesign in an amount of six thousand, six hundred dollars. Modification number two is needed due to required additional design services, including review and approval of alternate roofing installation, onsite meeting and inspections of additional pull tests, and onsite meeting and approval of proposed parapet rehabilitation in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and to authorize Danny Malloy, president of the board, to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the agreement.
Where are you? My, my agenda doesn't.
Number nine.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Oh, I see. Another item was removed from yesterday.
No, that's where she caught up on the numbers.
There was a high. Wasn't there a personnel action for Mr. Bradley?
There was an additional hire in there that we, we did not get.
So that changed, okay.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Discussion, we have to make sure that the change orders come in and get approved before the work is done. This is frustrating because he normally in that department does it, and on this particular one, it's been over a month. So, okay.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No, because it was already done. Commissioners are supposed to approve change orders because it's a modification to the contract before it's done, and this should have come to us last month. I don't feel good about, about that. So, no.
Item number ten is to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Tremble County Dog Kennel for the month of September, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to concur with the county engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed, and those companies are Workman Excavating and ASW Pipeline LLC.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to grant permission to the county engineer to close the road listed, and that is Oakfield North Road, BRI number six, located in Bristol Township for emergency bridge closure, effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits for, requested by the companies listed, and the companies are FedEx Freight, Inc., Dayton Freight Lines, Inc., and Chagrin Oil and Gas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yeah.
Item number fourteen is to approve the satisfaction of mortgage for Paula M. Johnson. Ms. Johnson was assisted through Tremble County's CHIP program in two thousand and eleven. The mortgage was filed on July eighth, twenty, two thousand and eleven in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The CHIP mortgage was for a five-year declining term with fifteen percent due upon sale or transfer of the property, and Ms. Johnson has satisfied all terms and conditions of said mortgage.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to prepare and submit a pre-application in the Ohio Department of Development for the project year twenty twenty-three CDBG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant Program for a maximum amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the proposed Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Project located in a low and moderate income LMI consent decree area of Warren Township, and to authorize Danny Malloy, president of the board, to execute any and all documents related to the pre-application.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to approve the selection of GPD Group as the most qualified engineering firm to provide professional services for the Gerard Multi-Generational Center Gym Roof Replacement Activity, part of the project year twenty twenty-three CDBG Allocation Program, and to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to enter into negotiations with CPD Group to develop a final price proposal for the necessary construction administration work.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seventeen is to approve the selection of GPD Group as the most qualified engineering firm to provide professional services for the Howland Scope Center Improvements Activity, part of the project year twenty twenty-three CDBG Allocation Program, and to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to enter into negotiations with GPD Group to develop a final price proposal for the necessary construction administration work.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is to approve the selection of GPD Group as the most qualified engineering firm to provide professional services for the Emanuel Community Care Center Masonry and Windows Activity, part of the project year twenty twenty-three CDBG Allocation Program, and to authorize the Tremble County Planning Commission to enter into negotiations with GPD Group to develop a final price proposal for the necessary construction administration work.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is to authorize expenditure for storm water and sewer projects from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ODOT Diverging Diamond Waterline Relocation Project. And commissioners, if you would go to the following page. The ARPA provides funds to state, local, and tribal governments to make necessary investments in water and sewer infrastructure. By permitting funds to be used for water and sewer infrastructure needs, Congress recognized the critical role that clean drinking water and services for the collection and treatment of wastewater and stormwater play in protecting public health. Understanding, understanding that state, local, and tribal governments have a broad range of water and sewer infrastructure needs, the interim final rule provides these governments with wide latitude to identify investments in water and sewer infrastructure that are of highest priority for their own communities, which may include projects on privately owned infrastructure. The interim final rule does this by aligning eligible uses of the fiscal recovery funds with the wide range of types or categories of projects that would be eligible to receive financial assistance through the Environmental Protection Agency's Clean Water State Revolving Fund or Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Whereas the rule further observes that the types of projects eligible for CWSRF assistance include projects to construct, improve, and repair wastewater treatment plants, control non-point sources of pollution, improve resilience of infrastructure to severe weather events, create green infrastructure, and protect water, water bodies from pollution. Whereas the final rule further provides that expansion of drinking water infrastructure to meet needs of existing populations is an, is an eligible project, and whereas the county has identified a project which, in the judgment of the county, qualifies as a type of project which would be eligible to receive financial assistance through the CWSRF or is otherwise eligible under the final rule, which consists of the following. ODOT Diverging Diamond Waterline Relocation Project to maintain public water service for approximately two thousand, four hundred fifty-three households and businesses in Howland and Bazetta Townships. As the work will be performed by ODOT, the funds will be issued to ODOT pursuant to the terms of the sub-grant agreement attached here to as exhibit A. This project will fall into eligibility category five point one five drinking water, other water infrastructure. And then commissioners, if you go to the next page, item number five, the county authorizes the expenditure of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the ODOT Diverging Diamond Waterline Relocation Project, consistent with the terms of exhibit A.
Motion to authorize storm water and sewer projects from American Rescue Plans for ODOT Diverging Diamond Waterline Relocation.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, and item number twenty is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Tremble County Commissioners and the Ohio Department of Transportation, as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel, for ODOT to relocate an existing ten-inch water line for the development of the Diverging Diamond Interchange to maintain water service for over twenty-four hundred residents. And the Board of Tremble County Commissioners allocates the sum of one hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to ODOT.
Motion to enter a contract by and between the Board of Commissioners and the, and ODOT for the Divergent Diamond Project.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is to approve the personnel action for the employment of Ms. Courtney Hat for the full-time position of Human Resources Coordinator with the Tremble County Human Resources Department, effective October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Ms. Hat will be paid forty-four thousand, five hundred ninety-one dollars, ninety-five cents, pay range eight, year two, at a rate of twenty-one forty-three per hour based off experience and qualifications, and will serve a hundred and twenty-day probationary period.
Motion to approve personnel action for the employment of Ms. Courtney Hat.
Second.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two is to authorize on behalf of the Tremble County Department of Job and Family Services, the contracts per list dated October eight, eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Contracts create twenty-four training opportunities and nine job opportunities at a total cost of two hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, fully funded through Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is to approve the transfer of operational funds to the Child Support Enforcement Division Fund for the CSEA twenty twenty-three budget year in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for inter-fund operations transactions funds as listed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantalasa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Uh, no, because I didn't receive anything except for what everyone's reading.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda items. Do we have anything from the fellow colleagues on the board? Mark, can you give an update on your meeting ad last Wednesday?
Yeah, so we talked about it a little bit yesterday at the workshop, but had a very good meeting last week with Spencer Smith and Chuck Dyer and Dean Harris, Mike Salamone and myself regarding transportation in Tremble County. I was giving my take on, you know, obviously the past two years with the grant, and then, you know, what our vision is to try to move forward, our path forward in Tremble County. I, I made it known to ODOT, and you know, I'm speaking as one commissioner, I'm not speaking for the board, but I made it known to ODOT that one of the things that I had a problem with, I think, I think it gets mixed up a lot of times that you're not for public transportation, but just because you're not for joining WRTA doesn't mean you're not for public transportation. And I might add, there are some, there's some speculate, there's some specifications that I, I take umbrage with because first of all, I, I don't like the fact that if you join, and it's been documented a little bit, but I'll say it again. I, I don't like the fact that if it's on the ballot, that Tremble County doesn't control its own destiny, that, that essentially, you know, Mahoning County can, can, can vote it in, even if Tremble County votes it down, and it still would pass. I have, I have a problem with that. Secondly, in order to join, there's, you know, because Mahoning County has a quarter of a percent sales tax for, for their portion of it, we have to put in a quarter of a percent sales tax. There's no, you know, a tenth of a percent. There's no breaking that up to tailor make the needs of Tremble County, and I don't think that that's wise, because I mean, just putting that dollar amount on it and saying, yep, that's what we need, is, is exactly what we need. So I was letting them know that, you know, moving forward, we do believe in public transportation. We want some fixed routes in Tremble County. We had the fixed routes there for two years that were very beneficial and a lot of people used. What can they do to help us out? Obviously, they went back to the fact that, you know, you have to be a part of a WRTA, and, you know, there's no, there's no funds available for that. But we sort of went round and round and received an email from Spencer because we did highlight, you know, because I think we said, you know, at the end of the day, look, tho- those routes were beneficial, the numbers bear that out, but we want to contract services. We don't want to join. And Dean Harris was in the meeting from WRTA and said, that would be absolutely fine. But we need some skin in the game from the state. You know, we don't want to go back to our voters and just say, hey, you're going to pay for all this for, you know, two percent of the population. So at the end of the day, they came back with their OTPP fund that had been awarded to different, you know, the, the federal funds that are awarded to different entities, and there were adjustments within those funds. Long story short, there is a pot of money there through the flex fund that they can access if we come up with match money to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's a significant amount of money when we talk about what we can get with fixed rides, and if we're able to match. So, you know, I think we talked about it yesterday a little bit about having a public meeting and bringing Warren in, bringing Niles in, bringing everybody that we know now, the constituents that, that do utilize the service. These, these participating communities be at the table. What can they do to help Tremble County with that match so that we don't have to go to the voters and say, hey, look, we got to raise the sales tax. So, so I think the state worked very well with us. I, I was pleasantly surprised. There was a lot of talk that, well, there's no money if you don't join WRTA. Well, that's not the case. And, and they saw that there's a need here in Tremble County, and there's a tailor-made need, and they were able to, to, to assist us in that way. And, you know, to the tune, to the tune of three hundred thousand dollars, I think it's beneficial for the board to obviously have that meeting, number one, and then, number two, take a really hard look at that match money because it's very doable, as opposed to seven million dollars when you're talking about putting up three hundred thousand dollars to have some, some very important fixed routes in Tremble County, along with our, with our other system that we have with our seniors and disabled. So I look forward to that meeting. I look forward to bringing the city of Warren in. I look forward to bringing potentially Niles in, discussing some sort of partnership that we can go at it together. Again, so we don't have to go to the voters and say, look, we need a seven million dollar sales tax every year. And, and I love the work that WRTA does, but I don't think we need a seven million dollar system. I, I've said that before. I think we need a two million dollar system. And, and I'm not here to empire build for another public agency. What, what we're here to do is provide effective and efficient services, and I think we can do that for a lesser amount of dollars and without going to the taxpayers. So that was my meeting with, with them, and, and I want to thank them publicly, first of all, for taking the meeting, Chuck Dyer and Spencer Smith, who have been very helpful throughout the process, and Mike Salamone. So all in all, it was a good meeting, and, and there's funds out there, and we just need to know commitments from the board and commitments from other communities as to how we go about it.
Okay, so I want to respond to that. The application for the OTPP money was made actually put in by Dean Harris. So he had the forethought to actually plan for, for Tremble County because I don't know what our planning, I'm sorry, I don't know what our transit administrator administrator has been doing the last few years since he's been directed by the majority of the board. Not that we weren't going to apply. So if he was directed by Frank and Mauro, or, you know, come up with something. Now, here we are, a couple of years later, scrambling. Fortunately, there are people like Dean who worked on that. Now, one of the concerns that I have, many of them, is the in order to, for Tremble County to become the designee again, that means that the board would have, the board of Eastgate would have to say, yes, we trust Tremble County to, to provide services again. And everyone who lived the nightmare a few years back, I don't think that they would be able to sleep at night if they gave that duty back to Tremble County. So, or to a new board that we might develop, say, we were to develop a, a new board. Contracting gets us far less than if we were actually an RTA, then we would be eligible for match from the federal government. The fifty-three oh seven would be eligible, we'd be eligible to access that. As it currently stands, we're not able to. That's why, that's why Dean Harris had to make that application. Now, I'm grateful that he did, but at the same time, I think there's been a lot of misinformation shared about the services that WRTA would provide, and it would be countywide, and it would service all of the townships, and it wouldn't just be large, you know, the buses. So I, again, I don't mind. So I, again, I don't mind letting the voters decide on whether or not they want that. It's no different than a than a senate district or a school board district where you have different boundaries in different areas with different populations voting. So, um, I, we also have no plan, and that's another requirement in order for us to obtain that designation, uh, back or a board or our own RTA or the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we would have to have a plan in place, and there's nothing, so I don't. We have a transit administrator that gave a one-page plan, which included asking other people for money. So that's not going to pass a test for any board of people who have seen what's happened in Trumbull County in our care and care about the future of Trumbull County Transit. So I believe that, um, I don't want to move backwards, but I will, I I am happy to try to come up with that match and grateful that the state funded WRTA for the purpose of providing that because there can only be, there, there has to be us giving that additional amount because of the fifty-fifty operation split that's required. So just wanted to make a comment on that.
I guess my comment would be, I commend you, Commissioner Cantalamaesa, with this meeting. You came out of the meeting way more successful than I thought it would be with the initial meeting. I I I agree too that I will never want to put a seven million, I'm talking, Commissioner, I would never want to put a seven million dollar tax on on all the citizens of the county for the service as it sits or what it would be in the first initial years. Um, I think we can do better than that, I think we are responsible enough to handle our own money. Why we lost the fifty-three oh seven designation before, why it was blown up by some people on this board, uh, why we we went in a different direction that made us beholden to WRTA and other groups. And I think we can control our own destiny and provide our own transportation better here in Trumbull County with our own citizens than to just hand it over to WRTA and blend us in with with the routes they have in Mahoning County. So I do agree that we can do probably something better with two or three million dollars rather than a seven million dollars. Um, and I think we can do pretty, pretty good if we get six hundred thousand, if we match three hundred thousand, we have a six hundred thousand dollar program. Then I also think it's mandatory that we do bring Warren and Niles into the realm of this thing and not just our people in Champion and Howland and Kinsman, everyone paying for all the services that they have skin in the game, whereas most of the riders will be from those entities. So their citizens, they're going to have to pony up and be a partner with us, uh, with this program. Um, I'm looking forward to the public meeting, to moving forward with this. And and we proved, I think, just through this meeting, that we don't only have one option, as been told to us many, many times over the last few weeks, um, that there are other options, and this is just one that we found now, another option that could work, and maybe we'll find more next week at the meeting. So we owe it to our citizens to to search for every option we have. We do have a Transportation Director that we are paying. And if we need another board, if we need to to let him do what he's hired to do, right now, uh, basically, it seems like some people want to just hire him to make phone calls to WRTA back and forth, and that's not what I'm paying him to do at least. Um, so I look forward to the next, next week's meeting and beyond that. And the other thing that came out of the meeting was, we were told before that if we joined WRTA, if we did anything, we couldn't do anything till at the earliest July of next year. This meeting now, uh, Morrow's conversation with the state that he brought up in the public meeting was something could be implemented as early as April first. So, uh, that's three months he shaved off of it from what we were told initially. So helps on the way for those people that need rides. We're going to solve this thing, we're going to solve it in the most financially fiscally responsible way for all of our citizens.
I think it's important to underscore the fact that Trumbull County had nothing to do with the little life uh, rescue opportunity that was thrown to us, uh, by WRTA. All of these buses that have been running for the last three, two years had nothing to do with Trumbull County's appropriate planning. There's been no planning, there's been nothing to do, to be, there's been nothing done to prevent what happened with all of the transportation routes ending. There's, this is the, this is not, you know, to sit up here and pretend like the Board of Commissioners did a good thing by begging for money and saying that we don't need a plan, Commissioner. That, that to me was embarrassing on behalf of the Board of Commissioners.
I think it's embarrassing to go to the people and say you need, you need a sales tax increase for seven million dollars.
Um, you went straight to Mr. Dyer and said, we, we don't need a plan, we just need your money. And your, and your program's useless if you don't give it, that's exactly what you said, and I.
I don't think I said that.
I, I screen recorded that portion.
And I would see too, I would see too, Commissioner, that you, single-handedly, were the one that blew up the old system we had without having a new system.
Pay the old system contractor sixty thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand a year, now we're paying almost one point two million, and you had no plan for the last three years. You did your job of blowing the bridge up, you never built a new one.
And why didn't you have the conversation with the state? If you had so much, if you had so much pull and you had so, so much of a plan, why didn't you have that meeting with the state, or why won't they take a meeting with you, Commissioner?
I've talked to them throughout the process.
So where was the money you, you, you could have gotten for Trumbull County? Obviously.
Had one meeting, came back with a solution.
Did not, he did not obtain anything that was through, that was through.
Their hands stood ahead.
Well, you sure, you sure didn't obtain anything.
Credit for something that someone else, that someone else did that our, why didn't our transit administrator do his job? He's paid so much, and there is no public transit to administer. We'd be, I don't even understand how.
That's the plan, is to get the fifty-three oh seven designation back.
Doing anything.
And to have transportation in Trumbull County.
To get the designation back.
Yes, and access those federal funds.
Good luck, because I don't think anyone in their right mind in Trumbull County or in Mahoning County or anyone who serves on that board would trust Trumbull County to administer transit.
I don't think anybody in their right mind, the townships and across this county will vote for a seven million dollar transportation system, period.
Just let the.
Try it and see.
Let the people decide.
Funded on the, on that.
My belief is to let.
What happens when that doesn't happen? What happens when that doesn't happen? What's your plan?
The, the plan was that ODOT was stepping in to give us a safety net, to give us transportation for a few years.
Where's that in writing?
Put that so that we could get, you've been a commissioner longer than me, you should know that.
I'm talking about if the, if the, if the sales tax wouldn't pass, what's the plan?
That's what should, that should have been that effort.
What's your plan?
Be made before, okay.
You're putting all your eggs in that basket. Have you seen a lot of the things that are on the ballot today? Uh, for goods and services, an increase of a quarter of a percent in sales tax is not going to pass.
All right. All right, but I believe we, we need to allow the people to decide. It's a, it's a tool for.
You're not allowing the people to decide, you're pushing WRTA and and saying all the benefits of a seven million dollar system.
Allowing people.
And you're saying, I'm not deciding.
Allow, allowing people to decide is allowing them to vote.
But what do you, what would you like to do? You'd like to join WRTA, correct?
Allow them to, allow people to vote. And that's something that, you know, you look at these beautiful plans for downtown Warren, you look at economic development. We've got people in townships experiencing economic development with concerns about the lack of, of transportation. You look at our population decline, and you look at the apt statistics, and it shows that one of the primary reasons for that is younger generations prefer not to.
Mahoning County has had, Mahoning County has had transportation for years, public transportation for years. And their population is declining, what, what is your point?
My point is, we, if we want to attract industry, we need to have, and people to live in our community and revitalize, that is the important piece of the total planning package. It's not just mixed use and and downtown and all these beautiful things.
And and I think you're talking ninety-five percent to the people in the city of Warren right outside of the window. This is a big county. This county stretches from Mesopotamia to Kinsman.
This is not what I said, I, if you, and I'm, I'm sure you haven't reviewed it, but there was a plan that WRTA submitted, and it did include zones all over Trumbull County. And the, one of them was even out, and I think it was, uh, Brookfield or something. So there are, there are, there are zones that were planned, there are transit centers, there is, um, park and go options for people who might be going to, you know, Kent State or to Akron or something, there, there might be places where you can park your car and go. You might have a car that can get you somewhere, but not all the way out there, or just not want to drive that far. So there, there are a lot of different things, and it would include smaller vehicles to service everyone in Trumbull County. So I'm just saying, you keep on talking and and it's, it's incorrect, it's inaccurate to continue to say that it's just the buses and ninety-five percent of the people, yes, right now with just that. But if we actually had a full service, it would service all of Trumbull County in a variety of different ways, that's all.
But the Township Administration Association has voted unanimously that they didn't want to.
No, they didn't.
WRTA, yes, they did. Yes, they did.
No, they didn't.
Okay.
Incorrect.
Once again, all your options are all the eggs in one basket, and the basket says WRTA in the front. You're not even.
And that's okay.
Your other options.
We, we agree that WRTA does a good job with, with a lot of things. We just don't want to give them seven million dollars. We want to contract with them and tailor make a, a system to fit Trumbull County, that's where we differ.
Contracting with them is not going to get us the services it could cause us to, well, okay, fine, we can differ.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Sir?
Sean Shook, Trumbull County resident. Uh, I, my question is, and I believe Mr. Food brought this up at a meeting. Is it possible? And if so, would Ms. Frenchco be in favor? If it was possible to put it on the ballot in a way where only Trumbull County residents would be voting on it? No?
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
WRTA, that's one of the stipulations, it's the problem.
Well, I remember Mr. Food bringing this up at a meeting, and she refused to answer the question, so I thought I'd bring it back around and see. So it's not possible, so to be clear, Mahoning County would have just as much say, if not more say, in us having to spend seven million dollars on this.
In that passing, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We wouldn't control our own destiny at the end of the day.
Kind of different than senate districts, like the state senate districts where one county has more voters and the other.
Senate districts aren't taxes.
Just saying, school boards too, you know, okay.
Yeah, I believe we have a, a presentation, we have a group here that, uh, would like to speak. Josh, your group?
Commissioners. Josh Press.
Yep, come up to the microphone, Josh, I'm sorry, so we can record.
Uh, Josh Press, representing the Mahoning Valley Partnership here, uh, on behalf of Lynette Ford of Youngstown Foundation, Guy Coviallo with Youngstown, uh, Warren Regional Chamber, Teresa Miller with Valley Partners, Jim Keneck, Eastgate, and Anthony Trevina with the Western Reserve Port Authority. Um, we had come to the work session last week and presented to the work session, um, and a request for a one million dollar appropriation for economic development. I have another copy of the letter here, which I'll give you, and it was presented to you, but this is a signed copy. Um, going through the, uh, Valley Vision twenty fifty committee. Um, based on our discussion and guidance, we respectfully submit this letter of request for a million dollar appropriation um, from the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners General Fund to implement the Valley Vision two thousand and fifty plan. Created in part by Ernst and Young Study, which was commissioned by the Mahoning Valley Partnership here, represented by these five individuals. Um, the recipient nonprofit of these funds would be the Western Reserve Port Authority, a key partner in this initiative. Um, this plan will help Trumbull County recover from the negative effects of COVID nineteen pandemic by providing a recovery plan to help those who reside in qualified census tracts within Trumbull County an opportunity to recover from the pandemic, as well as provide general economic development to help the county move forward through four separate outcomes. First being stabilizing and expanding capacity of new and expanding businesses located within Trumbull County, increasing public awareness of the arts and culture industries, including parks, and their economic development role in Trumbull County. Increasing the participation of Trumbull County residents to workforce training, education, employment opportunities in Trumbull County, and increasing the sustainability of nonprofit organizations and businesses serving residents of Trumbull County. Um, with your investment, one million dollars, we'll be able to immediately implement Valley Vision two thousand and fifty committee and a recovery plan for Trumbull County. Um, I will have the attached budget, which I will share with you, I know we had shared with you, uh, at the work session as well. Um, we come to, we had met with the Mahoning County Commissioners, who, uh, had, do have a commitment of a one million dollar investment into this. And we have met with, um, both Mayor Franklin of the City of Warren and Mayor Brown of the City of Youngstown, and we plan to follow up, um, have those meetings as well. So let's review that letter, happy to take any questions, uh, as well as the five of us, happy to have any conversation or answer any questions from you three commissioners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And one question that that I do have, and I did bring this up in the workshop, and I think it, and it's being said, we already partnered up with each of you in some way, shape, or form through many different projects. How does this collectively coalition of us in Mahoning County doing this increase the, increase what we're already doing with you? And what areas are overlooked that will be picked up by this group that we may not be serving? Um, just through the individual partnerships?
Sure, um, and anyone can jump in here as well, but, um, bringing together the new leaders of these five organizations, um, for the first time in um, several years and working collaboratively, working with everyone in Mahoning County and Trumbull County to address these issues, creating a more inclusive opportunity for economic development moving forward. Um, compared to other regions across the state, in years past, we have lagged behind those comparable, um, regions and MSAs. This is an opportunity to work together with everyone in Trumbull County, organization-wise, individual-wise, business-wise, government-wise, same in Mahoning County as well, to kind of move that forward. Guy, I don't know if you have anything to add on that?
Sure. Guy Coviallo, uh, President, uh, CEO of the Youngstown One Regional Chamber. Commissioner Malloy, uh, in response to your question, for most of the, uh, five organizations here, there are some very specific targeted uh, work being done between the commissioners and each of these organizations individually. What we have before you addresses areas that none of us are currently focused on.
That's not true.
We've, we've.
Let our guest speak, Commissioner.
We've come together to identify areas where we think, uh, both in Mahoning and Trumbull Counties, uh, there's an opportunity to grow the economy by all of us working together. Um, and also, we feel that by pulling resources and and we feel we have a pretty good opportunity to also get some, uh, state matching dollars to go along, and also some corporate philanthropic dollars to help us with this. Uh, but they are areas that, uh, we feel we have not been very successful at as, as a, a group working together.
Um, how many groups? There's six groups represented on this, but you had mentioned a figure at the, at the workshop last week of how many total partner groups are, there's something like eighty-five different foundations or things that would be covered under this?
So there are five groups, uh, included in this request. The eighty-five that you are referring to are the eighty-five business, community, and governmental leaders that were interviewed by Ernst and Young when they, uh, put together the Valley Vision two thousand and fifty plan. Um, in terms of how many groups will ultimately be involved in setting the direction for Valley Vision two thousand and fifty is yet to be determined, but it will be more, far more than the five that are represented here. And it would include the Mahoning County Commissioners who have committed one million dollars to the effort. It would also include the Trumbull County Commissioners pending approval of a one million dollar commitment.
And one thing, um, I learned at, at a meeting too, that I went to last night, there are some foundations, a couple of them in this area that have bank accounts of like a hundred and fifty million dollars in these foundations. So by bringing private entities into something like this, do you envision tapping in or partnering up with some of those community foundations that that have bank accounts like that, that they could put toward economic development?
Commissioner, yes, and one of the five groups in, or one of the five entities in this request is the Youngstown Foundation. And, uh, there is a pending request with the Youngstown Foundation to assist in this, and it's one of the ones that you are referring to. Um, another one that I believe you are referring to is the Community Foundation of Western Pennsylvania in Eastern Ohio. And, uh, absolutely, we will be approaching them and, and tentatively have, have received a, a favorable response and just verbal communications, but there's nothing formal there yet. One by one, we will be formally, uh, presenting opportunities to support this, uh, both in the philanthropic world, but also in the corporate world.
This is kind of like an all-star team.
We've said all along, um, and we've been saying for the last two and a half years, we believe that one of the reasons we have not succeeded more economically is because we're all doing great work, but in silos. And we feel that by breaking down those silos and working together and pulling resources, we can be much more successful. And it's not us by ourselves coming to that conclusion. Ernst and Young researched multiple successful communities. And so the plan is based on best models that were, are practiced elsewhere. Uh, and it, and it includes a comparison of economic investment in different communities. And we do lag far behind in terms of public, private, and philanthropic dollars being invested in the work.
Thank you. I, I think it's a, um, obviously, it's a worthwhile, um.
Obviously.
I, I think it's a worthwhile, uh, cause, uh, when we talk about. I think it's a worthwhile uh cause uh when we talk about economic development and having everything under one roof. Um, it is a large ask and and uh uh I'm certainly going to take it under advisement. I think it's a um, I think obviously Mahoning County showed their willingness to participate. Something that we have to look at if we want to move the valley forward. But again, it's a large ask and um I plan to take it under advisement.
I I think it might be a large ask, but I I view this thing as an investment in our future with a high yield return. When we're looking at putting these groups together and investing a million dollars in this thing, how much more are they going to bring back in that? Just looking at the the players that are on here, these are people that I trust. These are our community pillars of our community, icons of our community. Since I took this job on day one, I've been blown away at the talent that we have here in the Mahoning Valley. And I know by far, none of the three of us up here on this board are economic wizards like the six of you that are sitting there right now. You all have more experience than any of us up here, and that's that's just a fact. You've been there, you've done that, you have a vision for the future, and by you guys coming together, I think it's a safe bet investment wise that we're going to see a far bigger yield on a million dollar investment with this than money sitting in the bank or sitting uh in a five percent interest bearing account that we have with one of our investments. We just had our investment meeting here, our Investment Advisory Committee. And we've got some yields, three and a half percent, six-year terms, five-year bonds, things like that, to invest in these guys for a million bucks. They're going to far exceed anything that we could possibly do.
Interesting. We, we already, their price has like more than, I think, tripled since I started to join the chamber.
You think forty-five thousand dollars is expensive?
Opportunity to talk.
Holy cow.
Then we're going to have an opportunity to talk, and I would appreciate that you treat me with the same decorum and respect that you.
You didn't treat them with the respect when they were talking, making your comments under your breath.
So the uh these are things that are actually in contracts that they're supposed to be, or they say that they're doing already. Especially when we're talking about the chamber. So they're they're receiving funds from Trumbull County to do just what is listed here. And it's been known in Trumbull County and in the Mahoning Valley that everyone works in silo and silos and in competition with each other. Wouldn't have to pay you any extra money to start working together. Just do it. I mean, you you.
When you're going to take your own advice? Are you kidding me? You're going to sit up here and talk about working together? You, Nikki French, going to talk about working together with other people?
Yeah.
Oh, you got to be kidding. It's the craziest thing I've ever heard.
Look at all, the bed tax that we give the Port Authority is tremendous. It's tremendous. Uh, we've got the uh Tourism Bureau Bureau that would love to have just a little pinch of what you receive. And we're already giving additional funds left and right from every other organization, from the state budget, from from everywhere. And that's great, but I don't I don't think that you need, we need to give additional money to to entities that already have a lot and should be working together as it is.
Of course, I hundred percent disagree with every single word that came out of her mouth, so.
Back and uh and make sure that our townships are taken care of before we give entities that have a lot of money, more money.
You don't think they're going to affect the townships? You don't think every township in Mahoning and Trumbull County are going to be affected by these?
You can continue to insult and and make people chuckle, which I find disappointing.
And then they're laughing at you, not with you, just so you know that.
Yeah.
And working with, working with townships is not putting on a sales tax, but my opinion.
Well, you know where I stand on this thing. I think I I commend you guys. I thank you for everything you do for the valley and everything you've done before and after I'll be here. And the citizens here, we're fortunate that we have this type of talent in Mahoning Valley that chooses to stay here and fight. We could, when people could have fled and left this valley and abandoned us, the chamber never left us, left us. Eastgate never left us.
She lined her pockets. Of course, they're not going to leave as long as they keep on getting all that money to use for administration and such. Look at their budgets. Look at their budgets. When you ask the Port Authority to to divide and show what they spend and what they do in Trumbull County, uh, they say they don't, they don't keep score, but in actuality, that's accounting. And we should make sure that Trumbull County is receiving the same benefits through the Port Authority as Mahoning. Like, these are, these are just.
Commissioner, we've had multiple presentations where the the economic development.
Actually, our joint meeting with the Port Authority this year, I was there. Mara was there. Three Mahoning County Commissioners were there. Where were you? Sam Cavalli gave a good presentation. Uh, Director Trevina gave a good presentation. Ed Maransky had a good presentation. Where were you?
And and to to believe you're the point, that we've gone through the presentation and we've seen the that we've seen what the economic development is uh, in Mahoning County. We've seen what they've done in Trumbull County. It's, it's actually, there's a disparity between Trumbull County getting more than Mahoning County, even though their population's higher. So that's just not true.
We have an airport today. We have an airbase here today, largely in part because of the individuals sitting in front of us. You're going to discredit that, or is that something you could have saved on your own?
I'm not saying that you give more million dollars of ARPA money for it. They they have enough.
And you don't think we're getting our monies worth out of forty-five thousand measly dollars we give the Chamber of Commerce?
Is that all it is?
That's all it is. And you voted no.
That's all it is?
Yeah, you voted no.
Okay.
But you're happy to be in any event they have where you can get your picture taken.
Okay. Okay, and and we know that the chamber and their board has put together a fundraiser for you. And I understand that there's paybacks and there's favor broking and all of that too.
No, anyone's talking politics up here. It's NASCAR Nikki with your WRTA sticker on your back. Oh, does anyone else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to take just a brief minute of your time. Um, my name is Terry, Terry DeGennaro, and I'm here for the Helms Foundation. The Helms Foundation is very new to our area. We are in the Mahoning Valley and we are now coming into the Trumbull area. We provide our therapy services, which is very unfamiliar in our area. It is a service that has not been here or available until over the last couple of years. And I think to just kind of put a timeline on things, up in Cuyahoga, Stark, those counties, they are saturated with our therapists. They have been for the past forty-plus years. And it's just unfortunate that those services have not kind of come across that imaginary line as you're coming down on the freeway. But they are now. And we have a presence um in Mahoning County. We are in several schools. We are in several social service areas. We are doing community projects and we have partnered with several other areas to provide services. We also now, we have been very fortunate, and I consider to be very blessed to have a space over on High Street, uh, Dr., I'm sorry, Attorney Danny Thomas. Uh, his building there, he had the second floor available and his daughter, uh, we are very fortunate to have her as well on our board, and he donated that space to us. So we are in the process right now of renovating it to have an independent art therapy studio. So this way we can continue to move ourselves forward, to expand on our programs and to affect Trumbull County. We have, we are in just kind of as an example, we are talking to several different areas. Um, we are in the process of doing a strategic alliance. And we are with many different agencies in the process of developing those programs. For instance, you know, somewhere safe, someplace safe, uh Salvation Army. We are working with Cadence. We have done some after-school programs as well, uh, Warren Schools. We are in talks with them also to get art therapy. And there's many other areas. We just need to have the funding, of course, the resources. And we need to have a space to do that independently as well. We are getting outreach from those individuals who have been exposed to art therapy and want to receive it outside of whether we are in the school, we are in we're in ju- um juvenile courts in Mahoning County. And we are in, again, um, we're with the elderly. We are in with potential development. It is, there are no areas that art therapy cannot be used, and I think people need to understand that art therapy is a credentialed master level profession. And in Ohio, they have finally licensed it after forty-plus years of fighting. But unfortunately, it's going to take a year for lucky, for them to figure out how that's going to look. And our art therapists also have, I have two art therapists who are also licensed LPCs. So we are able to provide the counseling component as well. So we wanted to let you know that we are present, that um we will be here at your meetings, you know, to find out what's going on. And I work very closely with Mahoning County Commissioners as well for project development and resources and to find out where the needs of the community are. So I just wanted to introduce ourselves and let you know we are here. We're a block over. And um, please feel free to reach out. Excuse me if you have any questions. You know, a lot of people don't understand what art therapy is. Um, I provided you with a little bit of information, but um hope that you would give us a call. And we are having our big fundraiser in November. We rely a lot on grant writing, unfortunately, right now because of the process of things being licensed. Um, and with insurance, I think we all understand there's a little bit of a struggle there. And we rely on our fundraising and our, again, our um I have, I see Lynette there, who has been very generous uh to our foundation as well. We are a nonprofit. And that is how we are functioning, and we are working on getting our independence. So we would just appreciate, like I says, um, your support in this area, and just please reach out, and I just thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gee, I have a question. So do you take um, do you take insurances or is it a?
That is where our strategic alliance is coming into play, and we're working at that. The problem is, is we're it's hard to understand if you're not in that billing world. Um, for instance, art therapy is not licensed, therefore it is not billable.
If you have an LP.
If you have the LPC.
Then you're allowed to.
Exactly, but then we have to align ourselves with an agency in order to go through that billing. You have to be approved through the insurance. You have to have, you know, for instance, Medicaid. You know, I think everybody's very familiar with Medicaid. You have to have that Omas credentialing, which is extremely costly.
Are you working with um Coleman and Compass or?
We have had, yes. We, our alignment, right now, we are looking into Cadence. We have had a lot of talks. We have done a lot of programs with them. And, you know, our missions align very similar. And we, the, and another thing with insurance people don't understand is that you cannot duplicate services. And even though we have the counseling, the LPC, they also have counselors. And again, if you make a referral, you cannot refer for the same service.
Have you worked with um our Children's Services Board or Mental Health and Recovery Board? Have you reached out?
We, yes, we were just voted on the Children and Family First Council. And we are talking with, we've had many referrals from them as well, from the Trumbull County, yes.
So there's Trumbull County Children's Services Board. It's different?
Yes, right. They're all, right. Okay. There's, they're separate. Even this family services and then the Trumbull County Mental Health Recovery Board is separate, and then there's Children's Services.
Okay.
Yes.
In in dealing, just a personal issue, dealing with a a family member with uh about mental disabilities. Partners with the Rich Center, does a lot with the Rich Center, uh, as far as like autism and and all.
We're in potential development, actually.
And I know that that's very beneficial to to that, everyone along the spectrum there, but uh is that, is that something you're planning on doing as well, partnering with the Rich Center?
The Rich Center is a little more specific. Um, we have approached them. You know, we have let them know that our services are available. They have different affiliations with YSU and their program is a little bit different um than potential developments. Potential development, uh, we are there. Actually, we're there now two days a week. We started a program there last year and we were there for three day, three sessions a week. And I think people say, oh, well, we know what our therapy is. And until we get in there and they see how it works and they see what it does, our programs have gone from having therapeutic group size, we will say, is generally eight to ten. Um, and our therapy sometimes has to be smaller, especially when you're working with disabilities. So what was happening though is there are so many different situations that are there and it comes out in the art. And now that you have things being conducted by this professional and they see this, some individuals should not be in the same room or using the same modalities or the certain whatever art intervention they may be doing at the time, because it is affecting them differently than it is somebody else. So our groups have gone down now to where we have gone from three to six. The groups have gotten smaller and very focused on those individual needs, and the goal setting is based on those needs. And that's happened. We're in ACLD, and that was um very eye-opening for them. A lot of children we had to pull from groups and are now in counseling because of what, excuse me, is coming out in that art.
Wow, interesting.
It's it's very powerful and even with dementia, we, there's no area that it cannot um be focused on, so.
Before, in the nineties, when I was working in in social work, that's, I facilitated groups. And that was what we did was art, but there was no licensing or no, there's some empirical guidance on how to facilitate those, and it's so nice for me to see that finally, finally coming out. And is it only the visual arts or are you doing movement therapy, like dancing mindfulness and things like that?
You know, there are so many things that are incorporated together in a session. Um, and I think it it depends upon actually where these individuals are. You know, people, we tell them, we're not there to teach you art. That is not what they do. We are there to learn from the clients. We are learned to, where are their needs? And how can we use, again, the modalities of art, movement, music? You know, it is all incorporated. You know, sensory tools, we have adaptive equipment also um to work with those that we service. So there is nobody who is excluded from it.
There are a lot of, and I was one of the first uh trainees, dancing mindfulness facilitators. Do you know Dr. Jamie Merrich and her group?
Don't, I, I'm sorry.
There are a lot of them in Trumb- in this area because she started dancing mindfulness, which is a therapeutic movement type of program, and I'm sure, I I'm excited for what you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, really, you know, um, there's all your qualitative and your quantitative data, you know, which all know our our columns need to be filled. Uh, you know, but the research shows, and if you, you know, I kind of delve into it, that the brain is just so overwhelmed with trauma. And in these situations, so many of this, it's abuse, it's, you know, cognition, it's limitations. And when you come in with art, it kind of peels through that and it touches that part of the brain, then that all of a sudden gets stimulated and things just start to come out. And at the, and they need to be addressed, and we're seeing a lot of that, you know, post-COVID especially. Um, the needs are very different than where they were a few years ago, and um the school is up in Cleveland. There are not too many schools for art therapy, actually. And um that is why I think that they are very saturated. I mean, you you can name a facility and I could tell you there isn't art therapist in it. Yeah, absolutely.
Hereafter, or are you right downtown today? Because I'd like to.
Yes, we're working, actually. I am going to go talk with, right, they had called us. We're going to do a mural um in Dave Grohl. Except it's going to be a community-based mural, and we're going to use the process of the interventions of our therapy um for the expression, for the meaning, for the community. And we're going to incorporate works from the community along with our therapists um, to come up with something for that, and we are working to put that proposal in. So, yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Go to the phone lines. If you have anything for the good of Trumbull County, hit star six, unmute yourself and announce name and where you're from. One more chance on the phone line, star six.
Can you hear me?
We do. Go ahead.
Uh, it's Amanda Abar, Warren, Ohio. Um, so good news, bad news. Um, good news is last Wednesday at the uh Health and Welfare Meeting for Warren, they did um, agree to change the language regarding pit bulls in the city. They are going to repeal that language, so good news. Bad news is the pound is still overflowing. Uh, we have dogs in crates. I'm actually about to pull in there now. I have no idea how many in crates at the moment. Um, keep in mind, the adoption fee is sixty-eight dollars. Right now, fifty-nine because it's uh less than half a year left for the license. But that includes your license, spay neuter, microchip, vaccines, rabies, for sixty-eight dollars. Any of those services alone, it is pretty close to that cost, if not more. So. So we really, really need to get people to understand how bad the crisis is, not just here, but literally everywhere. So if you know of anyone that is looking to adopt or foster, foster homes are desperately needed too for rescue organizations. Rescues can't help pounds like Trumbull if they don't have people to step up and foster the dog. So if you know of anyone that's looking to foster or adopt, please feel free to reach out to me. I can get you in contact with rescues, tell you how to get an application for a pound dog. And I'll be doing the weekly video here pretty soon, so everybody can see just how rough it is right now.
Thank you, Amanda.
You're welcome. All right, you guys have a good day.
You too.
I think it bears repeat, thank you, Amanda. I think it bears repeating though, that the Best Friends of Animal Society has recognized our pound as a no-kill shelter. And we, I think to the tune of, and maybe Amanda, you can elaborate on it, maybe not, but to the tune of over ninety percent adoption rate that we have. And, and that was very, that, that doesn't happen in a lot of communities, let me tell you. And it's come a long way in Trumbull County for us to be recognized by that organization. I just got the email for it yesterday. Michelle's very proud of that, as is the Board of Commissioners, as a part of our ongoing effort to make sure every dog is adopted. So I appreciate what you do out there as well, volunteer.
They sent, they sent the most adorable plaque and a sticker, the sticker's on the window, the plaque's hanging up. So to be a no-kill shelter, like they said, you have to have a ninety percent live rate. Last year, ours was ninety-nine point something. There was a less than one percent rate of dogs being euthanized. And most of those were medical, where it was kinder to let the dog go because they were suffering medically as opposed to behavioral. We are very fortunate in that fact, whereas a lot of places across the country are having to put down for space because they just can't do anymore.
And we're, we're going to be addressing, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I don't judge shelters, I don't, I try not to judge shelters that don't meet that criteria, only because I know what they're up against. And now if they make questionable decisions, that's another story, but, you know, but I understand.
Well, with the facility that we have, we, we are getting the most out of, that's for sure. And we're trying our best and we're moving forward with the new facility. As far as the RFQ for Architectural and Engineering Services, that'll be on the agenda here very shortly. So we're moving forward and hopefully we can, but, but I caution the board as well too, with, with that expansion and with a new facility, comes more space and potentially more, more employees and more overhead. So that's something that we're going to have to plan for, but it's something that's desperately needed in Trumbull County. So we appreciate what you do, Amanda. Thank you.
All right, you guys have a good day. I'm about to walk in.
Okay, hang up, Amanda, so we get the next call, please.
Okay.
Okay, next call, star six. One last time, star six.
If not, Mr., I'll second that motion.
Ms. Frenchco?
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.